To honor, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Call for a motion for the acceptance of the minutes of January fourteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second at discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one, motion carried unanimous. Call for a motion in minutes of the January twenty-first, 2020 special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second at discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one, motion carried unanimous. Anybody for public forum this evening?
No.
No. Okay, we'll move on to presentations for this evening, and we have some special presentations.
So you're gonna have to lift it. So, good evening, everybody, and on behalf of the board, and the board president will speak in a moment. They've decided, and we've all decided, to recognize some very important people in our community who have really done so much. Our first recipient of this honor is Billy and Danielle Freer, that have done an incredible amount of work and provided an incredible amount of support financially, emotionally, and really for our football team this year and in years past. And we wanted to acknowledge everything you've done. The jacket that your son Bill is wearing, all purchased with your own funds for our team, which is greatly appreciated. So, I don't know if you have...
They, Danielle and Billy go beyond the school district. They don't, their generosity has no bounds. They go out to the entire Ellenville community, anywhere in rewards thing. They do a kind, the Festival of Heroes, which donates money. We were, the police department was a recipient of one of those donations as well. And they continue just to go out and be generous with their time and their money. And, you know, this is just a small token of the school district's appreciation, but know that your efforts and your generosity will always be recognized, and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
So, we have a plaque for you to come up, and it says, "Billy and Danielle Freer, recognition of your generous donation of football jackets to the varsity football team, and grateful appreciation for your dedication and commitment to the Ellenville Central School community students, presented by the Board of Education of the Ellenville Central School District, January fourteenth, 2020." And really, thank you so much. I'm gonna leave them. Thank you, thank you so much. So, the second, the second recognition tonight we have is for the El Paradiso Restaurant. And they too, for our football team, and many other support activities of our school. They have always supported the Halloween events that we've had here in the past. But specifically tonight, we're recognizing your contribution to the varsity football team that went to the state championships and won. And you provided all, for those who don't know, provided all types of refreshments and pizza at no cost to the district or to the students so that they could celebrate their great accomplishment for our, for our school and our community. So, our genuine thanks and appreciation to you for all that you do for the community, but especially our football team this evening, so, I don't know.
And again, another organization, another restaurant and generosity, Alan and Michelle Neay. They go beyond, their generosity also goes beyond all the boundaries here. Every year, Alan will call me up on my cellphone on Halloween, "Hey, what do you guys, how many guys you got working tonight?" Brings a whole bunch of food to the, to the officers, also goes around, and was very generous in their donation towards the, the community efforts to raise money for the Joseph Stechler Memorial Park as well, and also to the school, just constant generosity. So, we thank you, and on behalf of John Burns, I'd like to...
So, if you could come up, we have a plaque to present to you. El Paradiso, in recognition of your generous donation for the varsity football team, and grateful appreciation for your dedication and commitment to the Ellenville Central School District, community, and students, presented by the Board of Education of the Ellenville Central School District, January fourteenth, 2020. Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you guys, thank you very much. All right, so for our next presentation, we will, it's under for construction, and we'll have Chris Colby, our architect, Lou Rodriguez, our construction manager, and we will talk about the construction schedule. Gentlemen.
So, I, just to give the board a quick intro, Vince and I met with the, with the team probably in December, was it December?
In December.
In December, right after the vote, to talk about what the construction schedule would look like. We had some preliminary discussions about the roof, and really got a lot of, you know, a lot accomplished with regard to the schedule, so we'll talk a little bit about that. Two summers of construction, which would be twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. Thank you. So, that's what we're, we're estimating right now for. We're in the process, and we'll be in the process of getting everything put together to submit to State Ed, and I'm gonna just turn it over to Chris Colby.
The document that Chris is handing out now is, it's kind of hard on the eyes because the schedule is pretty extensive. But what I will be doing is posting these two documents up on the website tomorrow so that if, that if you want to zoom in, you need the Hubble telescope to read them, just so, so don't even try. But when you look at it on a PDF on the computer, you'll, you'll be able to take a good look at it.
So, um, as Vince and Lisa mentioned, we met briefly about a month ago and went through with Lou what would look like a good phasing for the projects that we had allocated during the referendum process. The schedule that you have before you encompasses everything during the design process that you see in the blue, in the green, and then the, the yellow color there is what would be construction. So, it's probably easier to actually look at this handout. We're talking about what, we refer to LOI sets, which is letter of intent that has to go to SED. What we're gonna be working on first, starting in a few weeks here, is the additions. So, that'll be the cafeteria and the library, and subsequently, right after that, we're gonna be starting design on roofing. The first part of that is going to be, especially with the additions, and mainly with the additions, is going to be user group meetings. So, before we put pencil to paper, we're gonna sit down with the appropriate people within the district, staff, admin, and go through the needs and wants for those additions before we even start any sort of design. So, that's the first part. It's really a kickoff meeting to establish what the, you know, the details of the project are going to be needed to start the design. We'll get into things like materiality, layout of the spaces, functionality, et cetera. And then from that point, we, we'll start the design process. So, it'll start in a schematic design. From schematic design, we'll bring that back to the, that group, we'll review it with them, and then we, we just get more detailed with the design until we get to construction documents, which then go to the state. Lou will be part of that process as we're going through. Lou's gonna be looking at constructability. He's also gonna be looking at the budget. So, every time we do a design, we're gonna bring it back to the team. Everybody's gonna look at it, make sure we're on task with meeting the requirements of what they want in the project. And Lou's gonna make sure we're on task with the constructability as well as the construction budget. And those things get adjusted as we go through the design process. Once that's done, it'll go up to SED for review. The state will review the, the documents. Once that's complete, we get comments back from them. Those comments we need to address, and then we can go out to bid. So, that's in a nutshell, that's what the process looks like, and that's what the schedule that you have in front of you is essentially detailing, again, in design first and then construction. Once we're done with this first phase, which is the cafeteria and library additions, we're gonna start working on the roof. And then we also have Phase Two, which is security vestigils and the other scope of work that you see below for the following summer.
Thank you, Chris, board members. John?
Yes, I, I'm sorry, I don't have the acumen for the building stuff that Willie does, but I just wanted to ask a couple of questions here. We, we had some of our residents that had concerns over what was necessary and what was the timing of it. And I think for me, and I understand that the roof was a layover from a previous budget, but when I see things like waiting a year and a half to get something like the TV and radio studio done, I'm wondering why those aren't starting sooner? Is it, is it that all of this has to wait for SED?
Yeah, so everything that we have to do that's on this list has to first get designed and then go to SED. And part of the reason that it's staggered the way it is is, and Lou might want to speak to this, but is, is constructability. So, we're trying to put like stuff together. So, when we're going out to bid, we're getting, you know, an economy of scale with the contractors. We're doing, you know, work that's complementary in multiple spaces at the same time.
Chris, does, does, does aidable work also factor into how you schedule and lump pieces of a project together?
I'm sorry, is what?
Aidable. The, the aid, the ability to receive aid back, does that play into how?
That's part of it, yeah.
You lump these?
Yep, so if you remember when Dr. Timms was here, we talked about aidability.
Yeah, aidability, thank you for that word.
Yeah, and...
I struggle with this lately.
That's all right. So, the aidability and the timing of the project has an impact on taxes, so it ha, it has to be spread out over a certain period of time.
And the wait, I'm just chiming in one second. The wait for SED was just recently, it got short, and now I'm understanding it's increased again.
Yeah, so we have two options when it comes time to go to SED. The first option is the traditional route to go to SED, that has increased. The other option is third-party review, which is other architecture and engineering firms, they take on the documents that we design via SED, they'll distribute them, and they'll review them. That review time is much lower, and what we've seen happen, SED's put this in as a mechanism to help speed up review times. When districts are submitting all to third-party review, that time increases, and then everybody switches back to SED, and it kind of balances each other out. The disadvantage would go into third-party reviews, there's an additional cost for that review. So, SED's free theoretically. Third-party review, there is a cost depending on the size of the project.
So, Chris, is there an opportunity to make sure that our local contractors get to bid on some of, some of this work as well?
Yeah, you know, Lou could probably speak to that, you know, being in the district for a while. We do have to bid publicly, so anybody can bid on it that meets the, you know, qualifications, but part of that will be getting the word out to local contractors, depending on the scope of the work and their interests.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure that we definitely get that word out to the local contractors so they have an equal opportunity to bid on the process, the project as well.
Everything has to be public notice as part of the bid process, so anybody that's worked in the district in the past or that's local and has an interest, we can make sure they're on the list.
Other board members? Lisa?
I have a question about the design phase. That's not staggered, all of that happens initially, is that right?
Uh, no, so we are staggering it. If you look at this really easy-to-read schedule, on the top part, you'll see the, the blue bars further to the left, so that's really what we're starting in about a week. The roof, which is the phase below in the green, is pushed over to basically August. And then you drop down, you can see how they're staggered out through the rest of the phases.
But it's all this, or in spring of two thousand twenty-one?
There, there's a lot going on in the beginning for the roofing and the cafeteria and the library. And then we have subsequent phases below where we're starting some of the design work on the interior, Phase Two work, and then the site work will be in, design will be in two thousand twenty-one.
Other board members? No? That's it?
With regard to the construction timeline, yes. We're gonna ask, we're gonna, if it pleases the board, we're going to try to come up with some dates, invite some for these design, design groups. The board was pretty clear that they want to be involved in the design and input and all that information. So, we're gonna try to get dates together for construction workshops so that it could be a little bit less informal, and plans could be laid out, and we'll invite the stakeholders in the community, like the library. We'll invite, you know, administrators, librarians, and so forth to give their input. So, we're gonna work on that schedule and let the board know when the dates are. We're gonna be pretty steadfast in the dates, try to keep them. I know we're gonna go into budget season, it's gonna get really busy on Tuesdays, but maybe between Tuesdays and Wednesdays, we'll be able to lay out a schedule in the evenings so that people have the opportunity to give some input.
All right.
Yep, so what's next?
So, one of the options that, that we, that we've talked about would be doing a complete rip and tear off of, of the roof, or going with a, a pour-over, leaving the roof that's in good shape right now where it is and going with a product that lays over it. I asked Chris to talk a little bit about both solutions, and he brought a sample of the pour-over solution, which is considerably cheaper than a complete rip-off of the roof. So, if you kind of think about it with your home, if you have one set of shingles on your roof, putting another set of shingles on your roof that will last another thirty years as opposed to riffing off, ripping off the shingles, ripping off the plywood, then putting new plywood, and then putting new shingles on again. If you want to break it down in that simplistic terms, hopefully I didn't, I didn't butcher your technology too much, but that's the way I picture it in my brain.
That's pretty good. So, essentially, what you have on your building right now is this black rubber membrane. And that's the part that needs to be either replaced with the insulation. So, if we rip this rubber membrane off, we'll rip the insulation off as well. There's another, I'll call it technology out there, type of roofing system, which is this white coating that you see. It's called a liquid applied roofing system. First, you clean the existing roof, you put this gray primer on, fiberglass reinforcement, and then this coating on top. And you can put this coating on top in different thicknesses to get you a different warranty, longevity of the roof system. There's some advantages to this, using this system. The first is cost. By doing this, it drops the cost by about forty percent. So, that savings is money that can then be used elsewhere on the project. It's less disruptive, so in terms of construction flexibility, when we can do the work. Scheduling, we have a lot more leeway there. And then, there's no seams, so it might be hard to see here, I could pass this around. Rubber membrane roofs basically are just large blankets, and they get glued together. When this goes on, it's all one monolithic surface, so there's no seams that rip apart. So, it's just an option that we like to consider, cost being a big driver to it. It's something that we've used as a firm on hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of square feet of roof. We just did this throughout the entire district at Monticello. It's something we've done City of Middletown. West Point uses this, not our design. That's been in place for over ten years, so there's, there's some history to it. It's not a new product. But it's something that I think, just from a, even if we look at it as an alternate, something that we might want to consider just from a scheduling and a cost standpoint. So, I can pass this around.
Iris?
So, there must be some advantage to doing it the old-fashioned way as compared to this. So, what, what are those advantages?
So, the old-fashioned way, there's probably what I would call one advantage. If we do it the old-fashioned way, we're gonna have to add additional insulation. So, that's a, drives the cost up, but you get an increase in your insulation value on your roof. This, with this method, if we went that way, you can leave the existing insulation in place. If there's any wet insulation, we do have to cut that out. And so, we do have to have dry insulation. So, we've done some infrared roof scans to see if we have areas that are wet. We have very, very few, there's not many. So, they can be cut out, fixed, and then that could be applied. But that'd probably be the biggest advantage is you're gonna add more insulation to your roof. It's gonna cost more, but you're gonna increase your, your insulation value.
And also, walking on these roofs, I mean, people are up there for any number of reasons, so is it prone to tearing? Is it, and if it does tear, you know, is that ever an issue?
It's not prone to tearing. It's, it's a very durable roof system. If there is ever, say, somebody punctures it for some reason, it's very hard to do. It's a different type of membrane, as you can see. But it's very easy to repair. It's basically like painting on a new layer. You just pour the liquid on and paint it.
And it has a warranty?
It has, it has a warranty, so starting at fifteen years and going up to forty, depending on how thick you put on that, that coating.
So, once the warranty is expired, fifteen, twenty, forty years, whatever it may be, so then you look at repair and replacement again, like we're doing with the roofs now. So, how does that work with a product like this?
So, with that product, you don't rip it off in fifteen or twenty years, whatever the, the warranty is? The advantage of that is you would clean it and prime it and put another coating on top, so you'd never have to rip your roof off again.
So, once it's done, though, it's gotta be done basically forever this way, right?
No, I mean, if you wanted to rip it off and put another roof on, you could, but you could continue to clean, apply a new layer, get another twenty years, thirty-year warranty on top of it. The other advantage to that is you're limiting the amount of material you're sticking into a landfill. So, you, you have the, looking at what's sustainable, you know, on one hand, adding insulation saves energy, but on the other side, you're not putting all this material in a landfill either. And you're also going to a reflective coating, which lowers your cooling costs.
I was wondering if that's ever pointed out. You know, a white roof definitely reflects the heat, so the building should, to some degree, be cooler.
That's right.
In, in the sun.
Thank you. Vince?
Chris, I do have one question, and Paul and I were talking about this earlier and some of the mechanics. We do have a white roof on top of our, our elementary school now, a part of it, and it can be slippery at times, usually when it's wet or when there's ice on it. And I think the EPDM roof also has that, but not as much.
That's right.
How do you address the slipperiness of the, of this type of?
So, on the edge of that, I don't know if you saw it, you can put grit into the liquid applied batch, so it become almost like sandpaper. So, you can make walkway, as much do on the rubber roofs with the rubber pads. You can make a walkway that has a granular texture to it so that it's not slippery, around mechanical systems, roof hatches, et cetera.
So, is that like putting sand, like on the paint you rolled down on your garage floor so you don't slip on it?
Kinda.
Okay.
Any other board members? Iris?
I just wonder if you could supply us with the difference in cost? I don't know, is it on this little tiny? Is it in there?
Uh, no, no. We, yeah, we can work up some numbers for the cost difference.
Yeah, because if we're, you know, if you're asking us if we want to do it, I'd really want to see the comparison between the two, cost-wise.
Sure.
Thanks.
That's a great question, just a couple. So, what are the, what are the downsides to using that product?
Well, I think probably the biggest one that I'm familiar with is the slipperiness of it. It's, it's something that, you know, you have, just like even a TPO roof, which is the white roof that you have, it's, it is definitely a slippery roof system, so you have to be cognizant of how you're working on it and if you have the walkways on it.
It's a liquid product, so flashing that particular, I don't have a lot of experience with that product, Lou, Chris, so, but I can only imagine flashing that product must take a little more time than your conventional EPDM product.
Now, see, Chris, this is really who I wanted at the Michael. So, what happens is the flashing process is a fiberglass mesh. So, it's actually, it's easier. Yeah, so the fiberglass mesh is overlapped, they cut it, glue it, and then, like Chris said, it's, they roll on the final coating. And the coating, depending on how, you know, how many years of warranty you want, you get the extra coating. So, it's, it's a good product. I did some research on it. I personally haven't done it. I did talk to roofers about it. I've gotten some pretty good responses on it. IBM has used it as well on some of their buildings. So, you know, it's, it's a well-known approach. I think that it just, it's one of those things that, you know, what, I, you know, what Chris also said, I think the other disadvantage is you're not getting the, the additional R-value, potentially, with the full ripoff.
Which you are saving on the cooling because of the reflective nature, because of the reflective.
You're, you're saving on that, yeah, with the reflective nature of it, yep.
What are you finding, just to piggyback on to Iris's question and seeing that's how you did some research, what is the delta in cost, the budget, just rough numbers?
Rough numbers, you can do this product for about fifteen dollars a foot. I budgeted twenty-two for the EPDM. It's twenty-two, but then on top of the twenty-two, we also have the ripoff.
Sure.
So, I also have another four to five dollars a foot for ripoff of the roof. And like Chris said, what would happen here with the infrared scan, we would go down to the deck on areas that are wet, cut those wet areas out, new insulation, and build it back, and then, and then go to, you know.
So, it's ten to twelve dollar delta per square foot?
Yeah, I would say it's, yeah, it's probably a ten to twelve dollars a foot delta. But like Chris said, I, you know, I'm, for me, bid day proves it, so, you know. If there's an, an ability to do an alternate on this kind of thing, to just verify the cost, and if we're in a tough position, it's always nice to know that we've went and did our due diligence on the numbers.
I, for one, Mr. President and Superintendent, I'd be, I'd be open to your recommendation if you investigated the product along with Chris, of course, and presented to the board a recommendation as an alternate and a means of saving money. I'd be open to that.
Thank you.
So, I don't know, Vince just was, he doesn't know, if everyone knows what an alternate is? You, you bid out both, and one's an alternate, one's not an alternate, and you get to pick.
Yeah, and this, and this particular project, we have budgeted for the full ripoff, so we could do one of two things. We could go base bid with what Chris is, you know, looking at, what CPL is recommending. The alternate, in theory, would be an add-all. So, what we would... So what we would do is ask the contractors to bid in their base bid, the liquid applied, liquid applied process, and then the add alt would be to rip off and replace with a rubber roof. So this way, you would see the true delta.
What have you seen as a, when it fails, if it fails, where does it fail at as far as the manufacturing goes?
Usually, the biggest, I don't even know if I'd call it a fail, but it's, the biggest problem that you have is making sure during installation that your coating is on the, consistently across the roof. So sometimes you'll see where it's gray, like somebody, you know, it's a bright sunny day, the guys are mopping this on, and they just miss a spot. And primers left exposed, and maybe you get an issue with that, so they got to come back, clean it up, reprime it, repaint it, or relay the coating on. That's, that's the biggest difficulty with it. Usually, when you have, you know, architect, construction manager, most manufacturers send somebody out where they gauge to check their own, you know, the guys putting it on, just because they're worried about checking, you know, keeping their reputation in check. That doesn't happen that often, but that's the biggest difficulty I've seen with this.
Is there any annual expense for upkeep, maintenance?
You can get a maintenance contract if you want, but you don't have to.
Wayne?
So this is the first time I'm hearing of this product. How long has this product been in existence?
I, we've used it for the past seven years. I know West Point's roof's been on ten to twelve years. I think it's been in production for fifteen to twenty, so I could find out. But it's been, it's not new technology, it's been around a while.
Thank you.
Vince?
Chris, how do we handle any warranty or repair concerns? I know that the roof we have right now, one of the reasons why we're doing this, they've been out of warranty for quite some time, and the manufacturer wouldn't come back and actually do any repairs. So let's say that we have an issue, the guys detect some type of leak or something like that. How do we address it? It may be something that we did, maybe somebody dropped a two-by-four on it and they, and they punctured it. So how do we do repairs that we caused, and how do we address warranty issues?
Yeah, so with these, the manufacturers that we've worked with, I find on this liquid-applied roofing are completely night and day different than a typical sort of installation in terms of warranty calls. I don't know if it's just a reputation thing, or it's just ease of fixing. It's a lot easier to repair. It's just a phone call typically to the manufacturer, directly to the manufacturer, not to the contractor. So the advantage there is the manufacturers have been in business, they're bigger than the contractors, they're around a lot longer, there's less hassle getting somebody on site.
I'd like you to provide us with the maintenance contract cost as well when you price this out.
Sure, and I, you know, we can make that part of the bid as well, you know, to include maintenance contract cost.
Any other board members on this?
Just one final question, please, Mr. President. Who's the manufacturer that you would, you would, you have history with?
The one that we use most frequently is Trumco.
Trumco?
Yeah.
Rapid, okay, thank you.
Trumco. Anybody else? If not, Chris, thank you. Thank you very much. Lou, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We are in cameo appearance there, Lou.
I don't have a question for them necessarily, but for these design, user group meetings and design conversations, can we invite a couple students to some of those? Is that typical, or?
Yeah, I mean, we definitely can. Yeah, for those spaces, like the?
Right, like the high school library and even the press box, you know, places that students.
We'll work with Mr. Pabon and Mr. Moyer on that.
Hey, thank you. Move on to reports, information, and correspondence. I have nothing for this evening, board membership. Anybody? Nope, we'll move on to student representative is not here. We'll then move on to Superintendent Lisa Wilds.
So I have a few things this evening. The class of 2021, the advisors, Mrs. Baxter and Mr. McIntyre came up and met with me. They have some initial information regarding the 2021 senior class trip. There are three options that they're looking at. One's Virginia Beach, one's Orlando, and one's Hershey Park. The costs are pretty different for each project, excuse me, for each trip. And they will be, in accordance with the board policy, they have to be to the board by June fifteenth, so for the initial. But these are, they did give me the initial proposals, those are the areas. And I think you'll see them before the end of the school year with the final determination. They're way ahead of it, which is, which is good. So I'll make sure these go into your packet, your next packet, so you have the information. On February thirteenth at six fifteen, I put a notice and a memo at your, at your seats at the village hall. The committee and the board, the boards of the school, the village and the town, are having a meeting for an update on the marketing program that we have with Mr. Berliner. He's going to show where, what they've done to date and open up any, open up the forum for any questions that any of the board members or committee members may have. So please mark your calendars. I really, this is the opportunity for, for us to get the information from them. I know the last meeting that we had with Mr. Berliner and representatives from the town and the village, he is doing, if you look at the top of the sheet that I gave you, and even on our website, we have this tree of knowledge as one of our, part of our logo. And he's taken that and worked with other designs to just try to come up, not with a mascot, but with a logo for our stationery and so forth, that would be similar for all three organizations, so that there's some kind of branding that's consistent. So he will be able to show all of that to you at the meeting on the thirteenth. So please mark your calendars, that's an important meeting. On February twenty-sixth, tentatively, that's a, I believe it's a Wednesday evening, right here in the High School Media Center, we are going to have our winter high school graduation. We have two students that passed some regents and completed requirements, and they will be graduating. That is right now scheduled for six thirty on the twenty-sixth of February. If there's a tentative date, if there's any change, Mrs. Doria will call you and let you know. And the last thing I have is that there are, I'm not sure if it made it into the packet, but there are nominations. Ulster County, Ulster County BOSI's Board is asking for nominations for a representative on the board. Currently, Geneva Mae has been gracious enough to travel over the mountain during her very busy schedule to sit on that board. However, she has advised me that her schedule has just gotten intense and that she can no longer commit to that after this year. So we are looking for a representative to sit on the Ulster County BOSI's Board. I'm looking all over. And it doesn't have to be a board member, if anybody is interested, if they can bring their, their name forward.
I didn't mean to make eye contact, I apologize.
We are looking for somebody to sit on, on that board. We have to have nominations, and I think by, did it say March first, or? We'll get the dates, but we really need a representative on that board. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. Napoli?
So I, I don't have a report, I'd just like to remind the board that our first budget workshop is February eighteenth.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Iris?
So in your report, Vince, we have the architecture's press box report. So I have a couple of questions. I just, I'm interested in knowing, is that actually part of the capital project?
Is what part of the capital project?
Repairing and rehabilitating the press box.
Yes, it is, but more of the electrical part. We did ask them to give us an overall inspection of the press box, just so we could make sure that we had some documentation on it.
Right, so there are many, you know, a number of things that we're looking to repair. So is that all included in the current capital project, or are we fixing that on the side, so to speak?
Some of the things we'll do on the side. The capital project was really designed to address the electrical issues. Paul and I have been looking at replacing the door over the concession stand out of the regular budget, as well as the door on the, on the, the side door entrance that's been beat up over the years by baseballs and whatever. So some things we'll, we'll address as part of our regular O and M budget, but the capital project will address the electrical component of it. And that was where our biggest concern was.
So the repairs outside of the capital budget part come from the regular budget that we prepare for the school?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll know what that'll be before we go ahead with it?
I, if you want me to let you know what Paul and I are looking at to replace in a way, I can certainly put that in my report. For example, we're going to be replacing the concession overhead door March, or something like that.
I'd be interested in seeing the cost as we go, yeah.
Sure, I can certainly do that.
Thanks.
Deputy Superintendent, Ms. Angela, no, John.
Hey, Vince, I'm glad that we're going to fix that concession stand-up because it is an eyesore, and it's been around since the Romans, but is it, is it, I mean, we'd hope the goal to be to get a new, a new concession stand and press box. My concern is the steepness of the stairs, that people travel up and down there and things like that. Are we going to make plans to possibly tear it down and build a new one?
That was discussed as part of the capital project, and we decided to leave that press box there and not tear it down and go with a new one. It was kind of cost prohibitive to do that, which is why we decided, once we repainted this and it started to look a little bit better, to keep this press box in, in place and then just go with the electrical repairs that were needed so that they could actually sell concession. And I actually did find, I'm sorry, I didn't find, our records clerk actually found the plans and the blueprints from nineteen eighty-five for this, and we shared that with our architect. So it wasn't like someone just put it together. It was actually designed by an architect engineer, and then it was constructed.
And so we'll, we'll do some of those repairs, like regrading and things like that ourselves, to get that taken care of.
What do you mean by regrading?
Well, there was the regrading on the back of it so that the water didn't sit up against the walls.
Yeah, we can certainly address that, because that's where they all, we had an old shed there, and we tore that down while we were repainting it, and there was some damage done to the turf. But we will, we can definitely address that ourselves in-house.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, move on to Deputy Superintendent, Ms. Angela Urbina Medina.
Okay, included in my report was a request for approval of three teams of teachers, five teachers from each building to take part in a review of our school-wide plan. The request was for a maximum of ten hours. The groups will be led by the building principals and myself, and the reviewing process should be taking place once you've granted your approval in the next month or so. The final plan would be brought to the attention of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to personnel resolutions, under six point one. Upon the recommendation superintendent of schools, be resolved the resignation of Nicole Thompson, one-to-one teacher aide, be accepted effective January thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Some move.
Well, it's been moved second. It's been moved at second, and any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Six point two, final recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that Jamie Wickman be recalled as a teacher aide from the teacher aide recall list effective February third, twenty twenty, at an annual salary of twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars, prorated step two.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Six point three, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that Ruben Felder be appointed substitute cleaner at a rate of fifteen dollars per hour work nineteen twenty school year. Moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Six point four, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that Dr. Lori Cassell be appointed thirty-two fourteen hearing officer for the nineteen twenty school year.
Second.
Moved seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Six point five, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that Tomasa Giti Ret be appointed uncertified substitute teacher at a rate of ninety-five dollars per day work for the nineteen twenty school year.
Second.
Moved to seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Six point six, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that co-curricular personnel set forth below be approved at a contractual rate for the nineteen twenty school year.
Move the list.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Six point seven, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved the following coach be approved for, as indicated, for the nineteen twenty school year.
Some of them.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Six point eight, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved the following teachers be approved to work on the building strategic planning committee for the nineteen twenty school year, not to exceed ten hours' work at a rate of forty-two dollars per hour work.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion? Mr. Burns?
If I did my math correctly, this is sixty-three hundred dollars to review committees? Is that, is it, is it fifteen people at ten dollars and at forty-two dollars an hour for ten hours each? Does that not strike anyone else as a lot of money to review committees?
It's not reviewing committees, it's reviewing a strategic plan for each building. And it, a strategic plan that has to do with ESA, it's required.
You're going to work on the plan and committee.
And the plan has not been updated. We just underwent a, a monitoring review from State Ed for our title grants. And this was one area that was identified as an area of need that we needed to update the plan sooner than soon.
The only other option we have is to bring substitutes in during the day, which it's been hard to get substitutes and remove the teachers from the classroom, but we have to show that we put a committee together. So it kind of costs benefit on time and how to do it.
And I don't anticipate that we're going to use ten hours.
Thank you. Wayne?
Thank you. How are the, the staff members picked? Is this posted and they apply for it, or how is that, how does that work? I, I ask because I see the same names on, on a lot of things, and I just wonder how, how that works.
So non-tenured teachers were not selected to participate. The individuals selected per building were identified either through or collaboration with the superintendent and also with the teachers' union president. So we're looking for individuals, they were invited to participate. If anyone was not interested in participating, they would, you know, have the opportunity to opt out. But for the most part, all of the people that were invited were interested in participating.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Not, I will call this to vote. All those in favor? Opposed? I'm going to abstain because my wife's on the list. Six point nine, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that the waiver of tenure for Cherish Berry be approved as attached.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Six point ten, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that the probationary appointment of Paul Caratini be extended for an additional six months with a new probationary expiration date of August twentieth, twenty twenty.
Some move. Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Under seven?
Motion to move seven point one and seven point two.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Under eight?
Motion to move eight one and eight two.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Under nine?
Motion to move nine one.
Moved and seconded for IEPs, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Under ten?
Motion to move ten one, ten two.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Mark your calendars, the next meeting date is February eleventh. And is there anything anybody wants to see on the next agenda? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one?